Response. Why this silence by an office holder toward constituents? Perhaps he's been advised not to speak with anyone about this. How does that relate to the virtue of transparency? Based on personal conversations as recently as last evening, people in my precinct remember the details of what happened 13 months ago, and they do not like it. Mr. Hearn recently was in Hamilton Superior Court. He now stands in the Court of Public Opinion. His misconduct has cast a shadow over the important work of the Hamilton County Council. The voters of Hamilton County deserve better. Mr. Hearn, sir, I call upon you to resign.
Are there any other public comments today? State your name, please.
I'm David Giffel, and I live at 10736 Pine Bluff Drive in Fishers. I was elected in May as a Republican Precinct Committeeman, Delaware 19. And this is real hard for me today. My first meeting I've ever been to in a public setting. You know, to me, I decided to participate in government to try to make a better community, and part of that is to not be corrupt. Me, destroying signs is worse than that. It's disrupting an election. You know, as precinct committeeman, we handle the polls, try to make them honest. And I think we all make mistakes in life. Doesn't mean that after we make this mistake, we cannot be most quality. Jeff Hearn's confessed to this corruption to the courts, and yes, he'll make restitution to Rick, the person that he damaged, which is a fair consequence for what he did. But what he's not doing is making restitution to the voters. I don't think an apology without some sort of restitution to the voters is enough. Part of making an apology is restitution amends. Amends to me, the public is on my side, is for Jeff Hearn to resign. We have a petition going around right now for your resignation. Saturday morning, I went out for about an hour and knocking on doors, and had over 93% of the people sign the petition. A, to be quality, I think if you can resign, make amends, and then only then you can build trust again, and I hope you decide to take steps to be most quality.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay, see none. We'll move on to committee officer reports. President has none. Mr. Vice President?
I have none.
Okay. Highway, Rick?
We met today, and I believe everything will be discussed tonight.
All right. Finance, the Almighty Finance Committee.
Yeah, Finance Committee met, and we're kind of discussing major projects that are in front of us and how we were going to fund them, and we come to some recommendations. And I'll just run them down real quick, and Rick jump in after I'm down a poll. Basically, we had three major projects in front of us and a ballpark idea of what their costs were going to be, and some of them more firm than others. But here's the way we've kind of... And we had our consultant, Mike Royer, run it for us to make sure that we could actually do it this way. So on Highway 37, we're committed to pay this year $12 million towards that project. And what we have... What we're recommending is $8 million out of Highway Coit, $4 million out of the general fund will equal the $12 million towards the 37 project. On the courthouse is about a $25 million project. And what we're considering there, or what we're recommending there, is $13 million in cash coming out of the Rainy Day Fund, $12 million worth of bonding for that particular project gets us to about $25 million. That will leave $18 million in the general fund. $18 million is what we want to leave in the general fund for our half-year's tax collection that Mike always recommends we keep on hand.
Bond rating, yeah.
That leaves a cash balance of cash available at $13 million. So if we... Before this evening's informational meetings we just had, if we were to spend $12 million on the original project for the jail expansion, we would still have the $18 million in the fund, and we could do those three projects without a property tax increase. Anything other than that, we'll have to go back to the Finance Committee. Any projects over and above that, we'll have to go back to Finance Committee. But we could do those three projects, as I just broke them down, bonding included, without a property tax increase. But anything over and above that would have to go back to Finance. We'd have to figure out where we're going to get the money. But we could do those three, have our $18 million cash balance that we keep to pay payroll half-years tax collection, and still do those three projects. That's what I got.
And just to clarify, Brad, on the Coit Highway, it's the low local income tax. It's the special distribution we got. We're moving that money to designate that plus the $4 million from current Coit for the combined $12 million to make our portion of the State Road 37. And Dawn, Rob, you guys were making it like a special account to isolate that, right? That's what we're moving around. Okay.
Big thanks to the Finance Committee. Appreciate all your hard work.
Oh, did you have something?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Anything else on Finance?
That's about it in a nutshell.
Thank you. That's enough, I guess. Personnel?
We did not meet. We will be meeting Tuesday morning, 10 o'clock.
Does anybody want to file anything today under miscellaneous?
Yes, Mr. President. I had sent an email regarding the resignation of Chris Jeter to the Hamilton County East Library Board, and in return included a request for appointment for Heather Lee. I don't know if you have had a chance to review that information, but I would like to amend the agenda to approve that, if possible, please.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I did.
Do you want to motion to approve Heather?
Yeah, I would make the motion if there was a second.
Second. It's a second already. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, done.
I have one item.
Under miscellaneous?
Yes.
Okay.
Robin, or if you guys could come, I want to give you this to make copies and distribute it, please, to everybody. Based upon some of the public comments and what happened last week with the court hearing, I'm making a motion to introduce a resolution of censure of Jeff Hearn.
Seconded.
And for discussion, I will read it, and then hopefully we can vote on it. Whereas Indiana Code 36-2-3-9, subsection 3, states, "The fiscal body of a county may adopt its own rules to govern proceedings of expelling a member under this section, but a two-thirds vote is required to expel a member or vacate his seat. This resolution is meant to convey the Hamilton County Council's displeasure with the recent admission of guilt of criminal mischief by Counselor Jeff Hearn. While his criminal mischief actions, which were directly related to his candidacy for Hamilton County Councilor, took place prior to his taking office on January 1, 2017, the guilty plea he admitted to the court on May 24, 2017, casts a shadow on the integrity of the entire Hamilton County Council specifically and all political officials in general. Therefore, be it known to all that the Hamilton County Council issues its letter of censure to Jeff Hearn and condemns his criminal actions to which he pleaded guilty."
Under discussion. Rick, do you have anything else you want to state there?
Well, I mean, I've waited until the legal process was completed before taking this step. And I believe we, the council, need to set a standard of acceptable, unacceptable behavior, and that's what I'm asking the council to do.
Okay. I'm going to go... I would start with Jeff, but that doesn't make too much sense. I'm going to start with Brad on this. Brad, on a vote.
Yes or no on censure?
Roll call, yeah.
Do I get to speak it on?
Yes, you will.
Yes.
Paul Ayers?
I'm going to vote yes, but I'd like to give my reasons for it. Well, first of all, I'm... The seriousness of the act isn't really my concern. My concern is with Counselor Hearn is the fact that after he pled guilty, after it was public knowledge, there's not been a word of apology, and the way I understand it, not even the fulfillment of what was ordered by the court, the way I understand it, maybe it's taken place, a written apology to Counselor McKinney. So as much as I really don't like doing this, I'm going to vote yes, not necessarily because of the situation, but because of your total silence when you should have been apologizing to the people that sponsored you, to the public in general, and you've kept silent to this council, and so therefore I'm voting yes. Thank you.
Counselor Ms. Schwartz?
I guess I'm going to give you a little bit different perspective. I think that if we're going to start casting stones at Mr. Hearn and asking him to resign for supposed crime that he committed, there's probably other felonies and people that have had other issues on this council, and if you want to go back and look, you might eliminate three or four other members. So I think we have a good council here. I think if you look at some people's track record, everybody's made a few little mistakes here. But looking forward, I think overall you can look at our financial history here in Hamilton County and realize that we've done a pretty good job keeping things afloat, more than just afloat. We've really done a good job of making this a great community, and I just don't agree with the censorship at all.
I appreciate your comments, especially about casting stones. I will say that that's very true. None of us here are perfect, and everybody's had their issues. My thing is, though, this directly affected a member of this body, and the public sees this after what happened. It's been publicized. You know, it was during an election. You know, that, to me, is unacceptable. We have to have... You know, we have to conduct ourselves differently during elections. That's my thing. I've known Jeff a long time, probably longer than anybody up here, and I don't... I just do not agree with that. I just think we have to make a statement to the public now that's out there that we don't accept that type of behavior when it comes to our election process and other members of this body. So I'm going to vote yes.
I'm only going to correct, or say, Steve, it wasn't supposedly.
It's an admitted admission of guilt to a court, and if it's not true, then it's perjury, and that's another whole ball of wax. So again...
Again, if you would like to go back through the track records of other council members, because that's what you're doing here, if you're going to do it for one, you ought to do it for all, because there are other issues that come up.
I think that's totally irrelevant to try to cast aspersions on everybody else when there's one subject, and it has been decided by the legal process. My vote is yes.
If I could actually see a copy, since I... That's okay. And I'm going to pass at this point.
Thank you. You said, like abstain?
No, I'm passing, and it means it goes down the line to Jeff, and then it can come back to me.
Okay.
Yes, this is surprising to me that there's been an admission of guilt of criminal mischief. As of now, there's charges that still stand, have not been arrested and processed. There's no mug shots, there's no fingerprints. The prosecutor as of now said, you know, we can continue with this, talked to my attorney. My attorney gave me the best advice, that said it's going to be another $20,000 possibly to fight a misdemeanor. I took my attorney's advice, because $20,000 is a lot of money to come out of my family. They said, if you're willing to write the check for some signs, write an apology letter, which states that your attitude, your, you know, your behavior during the campaign trail, and being nice better be nicer, and things like that, which is something I all always can work on is be a better person, willing to do that. They said in less than a year, charges will be dismissed. There'll be no prosecution, there'll be nothing. So there is no crime. So this is kind of all surprising to me. I lost my checkbook, my passport, and a number of things out of my car that evening. Gates were open, we had an electrical storm, couldn't shut the gates. A lot of people there often leave their cars unlocked, and my bad. But I understand, I appreciate you guys coming tonight and speaking your voice. I mean, you know, as there's people that are wanting to push Trump out of office, to put Hillary Clinton in, other people's push to get Barack Obama out of office, others pushed George W. Bush to get out of office, other people are fighting to get Bill Clinton out of office. That's what we do. We fight for all the people that we want in office and those that we don't. I had, after all this had been through and gone with, over approximately 73,000 people in the county voted for me to do what I was elected to do at the Fall Creek Township trustee position, lower taxes, keep taxes low, increase services. They elected me to do that here, and that's what I plan to continue to do.
I don't know, Jeff, if you're living in a fantasy land, because the agreement to withhold prosecution is contingent upon, number one, you admit the offense of criminal mischief, class A misdemeanor, and if you deny it, then you're committing perjury. It's plain as day. You had the best defense team in the state of Indiana money could buy, and they didn't get the charges dismissed. It's a plea agreement, and I think honestly that it's almost delusional, so...
I don't agree. I mean, I personally would not plead guilty to something that I was innocent of, right, wrong, or indifferent based on the amount of money or what it would put your family through. This is the first time I've actually seen this document. I don't agree. I'm abstaining. I don't feel that I have had enough time to process this all, to be very honest.
And that's fine. You know, and we're going to close this out and hopefully move on from this. But like I said, you could... You know, what Counselor Ms. Schwartz said about, you know, cast the first stone, that type of stuff, that anything... This directly affected a member of this body, and it directly affected our election process. So that's why I voted for it. So... And with that, like I said, let's move on. Oh, yeah, now, so the motion does carry, 1, 2, 3, 4, to 2, one abstain, right?
No.
Has to be two-thirds for a...
That's for expulsion.
That's for expulsion.
This is just a resolution.
That's just a central resolution, so the motion carries.
Yeah.
Now, moving on, to see no unfinished business, we'll move on to table business. There's an additional appropriation for the State Road 37 marketing plan.
Let's leave that table.
Okay. New business, Hamilton County Express 2018 grant budget. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Is there any discussion?
Well, let's hear what she's got to say.
Okay.
I brought some information. I'm happy to share it with you all. I'll be quick. My name's Kristi Campbell, and I'm the Vice President of Transportation at Janus, operator of Hamilton County Express Public Transit, and I'm here this evening to request local match funding for our grant application for 2018. There's, of course, an operating grant and a capital grant. Our request for operating local match in 2018 is $364,241. Our capital local match request is $67,360. And we are interested in, of course, doing a fleet replacement, as we've done in the past, as well as supporting our operating expenses. We're seeking to replace our five oldest, highest mileage vehicles, three of which are not ADA accessible. So with this grant, we're hoping to get our fleet completely ADA accessible, our 22 vehicles. And this year, their capital funding is allowing subrecipients to apply for technology. We are applying for security cameras for the fleet to increase security and provide for improved liability. And then we're also applying for tablet computers to replace paper manifests. We'd like to go paperless in our system. The capital items, the vehicles, and the technology are 80/20, 20% local match, 80 federal. The operating grant is 50/50, and so we're seeking the county funding to provide some of the local match. Other of the local match will be provided by the state public transit fund, as well as Janus fundraising through selling advertisements on outsides of the vehicles. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about Hamilton County Express, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Just for the grant, right? I mean...
For the grant.
Is this the county's portion, is it an increase over last year?
No, it's actually a decrease.
I'll take it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Move on to approval of vendor claims.
They'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We got a CF1 real property form, 2017/18, Alliance for Cooperative Energy Services Power Marketing LLC. Number one, is there a motion?
They'll move.
Second.
Let's see if one of them showed up.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Is Dave here?
Is he here?
Anyone here? Yep, that's fine.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Well, yeah, they're in substantial compliance. That's what we have to declare.
Okay. Aye.
They need to sign this. Aye.
There you go. Beck's Hybrids.
I seen Mr. Beck here.
I'll make a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All right.
Hang on.
My name's Matt House. I'm financial manager at Beck's Hybrids, and beside me here is Sonny Beck. Sonny is CEO and chairman of the board of Beck's Hybrids. As you may know, Beck's develops, produces, processes, and sells corn and soybean seed in approximately 50% of the acres that are planted in corn and soybeans in the U.S., from Iowa to Ohio, as well as Wisconsin to Tennessee. For 2016 planted seed, Beck's increased their market share again by over 20%, and we're forecasted to increase our market share again for 2017 planted seed by nearly 15%. During 2016, Beck's invested approximately $10.5 million into new real and personal property at the Atlanta, Indiana headquarters. Included in these investments are a technology building, a warehouse renovation, Huskonsorten equipment, production equipment, and shipping equipment. Beck's continues to employ 338 Hamilton County employees with an annual salary of nearly $23 million in 2016. As you may be aware, there are a number of mergers and acquisitions that are occurring inside the seed industry with competing seed companies. Independence in a family-owned structure are critical to Beck's business model. Beck's long-term strategy is to remain family-owned and to continue to grow the headquarters in Hamilton County. We appreciate the support of the council and other Hamilton County bodies that we interact with, and appreciate your time tonight, too. Thank you.
I think Beck's is in compliance. Have you guys got all the construction projects that this abatement's for? Are those all complete, or are you still under...
We are still in process with projects, correct.
Do we have say, Rick?
I would say they're in substantial compliance, and as I've said before, you know, I've had campaign support from Beck's, it's never influenced my decision. They're great corporate citizens, they're doing a fabulous job, their airport is a shining example, hangar out at our airport. So I think they're doing a great job, and wish them continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, Madam Auditor, on D, it looks like it's the same thing.
It is the same thing?
Yeah, it's personal.
Personal property. So I'd make a motion for...
Both, right?
One and two.
Okay. Yeah, seconded. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On to Commissioner's discussion topics, Judicial Center expansion, sponsored by Counselor Man Beaver. Is there a motion?
So moved.
This is...
You seconding, Brad?
Second.
Okay.
I agreed to sponsor this. I had a conversation with Christine. This is for engineering money?
Correct. It's for the design work that we need to come up with final plans and specs for the bid for the project. To stay on our anticipated schedule, to keep ahead on the project, we really need to go to design as quickly as possible so we can have a bid packet available to put on the street early in the year. So this would keep it on schedule, and those monies, it's a not-to-exceed. Once we have the resolution to proceed with the appropriation, we'll commence discussions and negotiations on that contract.
Christine, just for my own information, remember this piece of paper, is that inside the 1.59 completion fee, what you're asking for tonight?
It is what we presented at our joint meeting at Highway.
Right, that's where I got this.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the same numbers.
It's moved and seconded. Anything else?
No.
Any other questions?
Do we have it on here? We don't have it on here. There's nothing to vote on.
It's just a motion to...
We did not present this in time to advertise for additional, but we did not want to proceed unless we had a resolution from you that we could proceed and go to contract subject to an appropriation.
So the dollar amount is which? The 1.57?
Yeah, that is the net of what we've already paid.
The resolution.
All right, there you go.
Not money.
Not money. There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
What do you think, Brad? What's your count?
Rainy day.
Do what?
I do rainy day?
Yes.
Rainy day.
Rainy day's fine, yeah. On solar pylon project sponsored by Counselor Man Steve Schwartz for discussion, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. There you go. Here she comes.
Seeing how I am not an expert in this matter, we've asked Johnson Mellow, who is the selected contractor, we went through that process for the guaranteed energy savings contract program. Several years ago, we went through the process of advertising for a vendor to provide this guaranteed savings program that they will describe. We talked about a solar project during that time, I believe it was 2014, and at that time, solar panels were fairly expensive, and it just did not make sense in terms of what the cost benefit was. Solar panels have gone down significantly, and the efficiencies have gone up, and at this point, they will walk through the numbers, but the long and short, in less than the useful life of these panels, we will be able to save over $12 million in energy savings combined with the different change in lighting. What we're going to need to do to proceed with this, and we need to have it done by the end of the year, is have your permission not only to move forward, but it would be a bond and an appropriation for the bonded amount. So I will ask the Johnson Mellow folks to go through what this project is, the cost savings... the cost savings, et cetera. But the good news is, it has, at this point, no negative impact at all on the general fund and in fact, will be a significant positive addition for the general fund over the term of the project. Mr. Wood is here to explain on how he plans on paying for this. See, we could rely on you to do that.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So underneath my budget, I pay the electrical bills for the Sheriff's Complex and with the Health Department. We spent $798,000 in 2014. We did some electrical changes, we were able to reduce it some. We would pay for this out of our electrical savings and within the current budget to pay that bond payment. I do have something for you.
You ain't got nothing this thick like that, Dave?
I do, but I tried to listen to what you all asked for. You're gonna see on here, 4% to 7% increase in electric.
Thank you.
From Duke. Better get one of the auditor because she will yell at me later.
There you go.
On the cover sheet, you're gonna see 7% increase from Duke. On the next page, you will see what we paid in 2016 for electric, everything except for the Health Department, with the 4% and the 7% increase. That has been going on for the last several years. So for the goal for us, for the solar field, today not to be so dependent on electrical grid and to be able to cut back what we ask for in the future and to get back to the general fund. So after the bond was paid off, we would be able to give that money, a portion of that money, back. We have a jail, possible jail expansion going after. We have to figure out how to pay the utilities for that. This will help with that. So as we looked at this, as a request we committed to Council several years ago, how to cut budgets. This was one of the ideas that we had. That first moment we brought this, Mr. Beaver pointed it out to me. Prices are gonna go down. Now they've gone down. That's me, these are the experts.
I don't know if I'm an expert. My name's Kurt Schneider, I'm one of the owners of Johnson Mellow, 41-year-old company in the local community. I'm also a resident of Hamilton County for 28 years. This is Jeff Harden, Electrical Engineer, and Mitch Steen from my offices. I guess, very simplistically, what's changed? Because this is not my decision, this was, my decision from a standpoint is two things. We own and operate over nine different solar projects. We did this on our own first, as basically an ownership, a family ownership, over millions of dollars of basically nine different projects and a couple megawatts. So the bottom line here is a couple things. What's changed from the committee? One is that solar panel costs have gone down 600% since we actually, five years ago. Number two, the actual efficiency went up, but the land use went way down. Example, we were very fortunate, I was president of the Indianapolis Airport project, over 80,000 solar panels. The first project is 44,000 panels, of which took 75 acres. Today, that would only take to accomplish the same amount of energy output, 28,500 panels, and the land acreage would go from 75 acres down to 48. That gives you kind of a pretty breadth of range of what's going on. The next particular piece is, this is a combination. The first things you want to do is do as much energy efficiency in your buildings. The scope of this particular work is, you already done good work at LED, but there's a still substantial amount of LED with Duke rebates, which you've seen substantially in your coffers from the work we basically done with Steve Woods. But also, this is electric to gas conversion at the Community Corrections Facilities. They spend over 3 million kilowatt hours and a similar structure and gas is almost half. So that's also part of this particular program. So we've got the energy efficiency piece. We want to then top it off with solar. Why? It's not savings, okay? It's avoiding all the escalations of energy that we've seen over the last 16 years. And part of your actual study you'll see over the last 16 years has been a 4.2% escalation averaged by the utility from Indiana. That's peace. So now, a part of this piece right here, this savings project, is important. But once again, this is suggested from the committee we put together. We basically don't, we don't actually pay any money for 18 months. And an important piece is, it's not an increase to the property taxes, or pop, property taxes to any of our community people. We go 18 months, we do the installation in six. The actual, avoiding the energy that you have, basically will build coffers or general fund money that you need from your utility budget. It comes to about $800,000. The second piece, then we have an 18 and a half year loan, of which I, we wanted to go conservative, we went 3.65%. I know you can do lower, that's fine. I'm not in that business and it'll just help the actual return. So we went 18 and a half years and very simply, the energy you're paying or the cost you're paying, the bill you're paying Duke, now is just used for the payment. So that's how we've done it. And then, from the standpoint from there, you're, I call it, the school system that has the lowest means in basically the county being shared in, and that's Dave Monday, he's already done this and has been very proven that the total amount of utility bill went to zero in credits. You can talk, call him up anytime you want to do. And also the airport, among many, many other. Ben Davis High School just recently, Lapel's High School, the whole city of North Vernon, 50 different locations. So it's catching up here in Indiana, doing these type of things. So in final, let's go risk mitigation. Some of the best practices that we've learned from doing this on our own is a couple things. Number one, we have business interruption insurance. What does that mean? Means if a tornado or ice storm comes through, it not only pays for the construction, but also the revenue loss in case there was, for the three or four months it's down, we have to rebuild. And then also, we basically, the committee agreed and thought it would be a good idea to have like a bonding company basically push through this, look at this, evaluate this, and see if they would come up with a cost basically in case Johnson Mellow after 41 years would go under and that we weren't making the production. And part of the actual program is also a risk mitigation bond that basically would come in for Hamilton County in case Johnson Mellow wouldn't produce the actual energy that was produced. So it's a little bit different these days. It's real simple. You see them visually, the videos with all the productions, black and white. There's no bill on that thing. So with that, I'm open for questions.
I have one other thing also. We have met with Duke Energy. Each site that we're looking at and gave us their recommendation that this would be a good project.
I'd like to just point out, ask a question. There's no assumption that the value, the land has any value, is that correct?
So the majority of it will go on the roofs of the building, the jail complex.
I'll show it to you.
And then over by the 911, over by the 911 tower.
Okay.
Okay, and over by the 911 tower, there's a wet area over there. All we do is mow it. At this time, you can't, there's really no reason to put a structure there. So for us, it makes more sense to give a straight power back to the jail complex.
I'm just saying there's...
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, for us, there's not.
Everything's worth some, I'm not trying to be argumentative.
I agree with you, but it's a wet area over there.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion to table and send to finance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Will you, will you guys lead your comments? No, wrong.
Thank you.
Is there any opposing?
Aye.
I do have one further question.
Go ahead.
Does this fit the timeline? We have 30 days and get back, are we well within the time limits?
To answer your question is, we've spent three years. I know that Senate Bill 309 says you can get your grandfather for 30 years if you don't get it done by the end of December, but it then reverts back to 15. I would just refer to be patient. I've just been doing business a long time. Just be patient and make feel, you feel comfortable with it. And we'll work our best.
That's very impressive, thank you.
Yeah, it is, actually.
What was the final vote?
Table, 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 table. She said no, alright. So what about?
Six one.
Six one, yeah, so six one. On the finance committee part, you guys, I'd like to know when you bring it back, how it affects, if we took that out and, you know, with all the other bonds, how it's gonna affect the levy?
Okay.
I have one question. Under the state law, Senate Bill 516, it has to be annually appropriated. Which means to the public, is that for some reason, Hamilton County, which will not go under, would go under. Then this would not affect your, basically your debt because it's annually appropriated, it has to be approved. That has to be done. So it's not incurring debt, although it is debt to Brad's piece.
We'll work it out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Auditor, for some reason our screens are showing CNN. Talking about Trump's, Trump story on CNN. Yeah, that's all they talk about on CNN.
I got nothing.
I have it right here. They have it right here.
You got it?
No.
I can see down here.
CNN. Joy, this is... Oh, now it's gone. Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Now we're gonna open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. Start with the 144 amendments. A, 1,000 County General Fund requesting $1,375,000. First one's the coroner, it looks like. $3,000, is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Court administration, $2,648,000 sponsored by Councilman Masalomani.
It's actually $2,648. You said 2 million.
Oh, did I? I'm losing it.
We could probably swing the 2,000.
Yeah.
So I'll make that $2,648 motion.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now, buildings and grounds. Additional $200,000 sponsored by Councilman Beaver, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Steve's still here with me. He called and was doing a repaving project on one of our lots and got into a big mess.
Actually, all the lots. So we sent this, the County Highway Department did the whole resurface project for us, which we created using another department. What we found was, we got in some of these areas like the jail complex, we did the milling down, we hit stone and hit water. So we had to put some deep patching in there in a couple of locations. Every lot that I'm responsible for, 400 buildings and grounds, the Highway Department, the Health Department, the Fairgrounds, HHW, Sheriff's Complex, the lots downtown are all being repaid. I just, I'm looking for an additional $200,000 to make some major repairs on some of these lots as we're going on.
You know, I'd like to see, and I've said this in other meetings, I don't know how the rest of the council feels like this. I'd like to know. It'd be nice if we get stuff on these besides this piece of paper.
Well, wait a minute. So I've always sent a lot of information. And this is, I know, but this is a due process for us.
Okay.
Doing it this way, not knowing exactly what you wanted to see. I have a whole book back here if you would like to look.
Don't bring me a whole book, bring me a proposal that you've gotten, proposals that you've gotten.
See, the thing about it is though, Fred, I understand what you're saying and I'm not disagreeing with you. But Steve called me and I'm by no means a paving expert, but I understand that.
I get you understand it, but I'd like to be able to say, hey, I looked at this before I voted on $200,000.
But they were in a project, running into some problems.
Yeah, and I support that, that's not what I'm saying. I'd like to say, hey, to somebody who asked me, yes, I saw that before I voted on it.
And that's not a problem. Also remember, anytime you can come down, even up there and ask for something and you'll get that information, which Mr. McKinney can vouch for, he's done that in the past.
Okay, thank you.
It's readily available for you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Moving on to ISS, looks like to pay for Posse projects, $977,515.
Moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Now I bring up Mr. Murden's here.
I got a call from Chris on this, but I didn't know it was gonna be... Need a million dollars, Chris?
Well, I was hoping Ollie needed 2.4 and make me look a little better. But yeah. Yeah, this project is a piece of software that has been used in the county for nearly 18 years. We have been with the same company, Computronics, since the late 90s and have moved forward with this Posse software. It's grown in the county, it's in a number of departments. I think I sent you a list of all the departments that use the software. It really handles just a number of things, from permits at the Health Department to the Highway Department.
So what do we get for a million dollars?
So the...
Continue to use it?
No, well, Computronics is changing the software completely. So when it was developed 18 years ago, client server, which, you know, they put their software on a server, we install software on the client. That's, that was the model. The model has changed in software today. Now it's, it's a web-based software. They need, to remain competitive, they have to change their software to work on mobile devices, handheld devices, tablets and PCs. And so they, in order to do that, they had to completely change the architecture of their product. And so it is a complete change for them in the way their product looks and operates. I did some investigation, there are other products, they have competitors, obviously. I'm a part of a national group that has customers of Computronics in that group and has their competitors as well. And from the research, if we went out to bid, because we could say, hey, Computronics, you've got a new product, we want to see what else is out there, I think we would be even, even more expensive. Computronics is gonna convert all of the customizations and forms that we've done over the past 18 years. Our users will have that same look and feel available. We've also gone to all the users and we asked them that question. Is there a desire to look at something different? Just to see what's out there. And to a department, I think all the departments are happy with Posse and with Computronics as a vendor. And I can assess, since I've been here at least, they've been very good to work with. They're responsive, I think they're fair. You know, they're not, they have taken a conservative approach to growth of their product because they want to maintain the support and the relationships with the customers they have.
Chris, I want you to know I support your request 100%. I do have some questions about how we're gonna pay for it.
Correct.
And I know you have a non-reverting fund, a little bit of money in there. My request to the, or my suggestion to the council would be that we let the finance committee review this and then address this next month.
Sorry, so I actually, can I interrupt for a second? Chris and I spoke regarding this, and obviously you see the sponsorship. We did speak about, there is obviously funds available in the non-reverting fund as it stands today. And it could be utilized. It would be something that obviously in the future may need to be replenished or the projects that were originally, that that money was set aside for, you know, obviously may not be able to be completed with this expenditure that wasn't necessarily budgeted for. So he was fine with utilizing the non-reverting fund if that's something that you guys... To my knowledge, yes.
Yes, there is.
I'm gonna make a motion to send this, to make a motion and further look at this, the finance committee, whether it's there or not, it's $977,000, so just to take a look at.
You want to make a motion to table and send to finance?
Yeah, table and send to finance.
Well, I mean, okay, I guess, is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay. So what is the value in that?
We need to vote on it.
We need to vote on it with a motion and second before no more discussion.
Alright, Brad.
Sure.
Can I throw one thing out there real quick?
What are we, that we're gonna table?
Table and send it to the finance committee, it's $977,000.
Didn't you already have a motion though, too, for the approval?
You made the motion to table, and who seconded it?
I did.
So, and then, Paul, did you just vote a yes to send it to finance committee as well?
Yeah, fine.
Table it, Steve, I suppose you are, me, Rick.
Yeah.
Vote, Rick.
I'm trying to think, I'm thinking. Yes.
Okay. Amy?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Let's go into finance committee.
We'll let you know next month.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it.
All right. Two hundred thousand dollars, professional services funds needed for Microsoft agreement renewal, from, this is sponsored by, looks like, who's the sponsor on this? Oh, you don't, for that? Okay, okay, so moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have appropriating reimbursement for machinery and equipments, grant funding EMA, sponsored by Councilman Ayers, is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have another request, and the Sheriff's Department at one hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred dollars, sponsored by Councilman Beaver, is there a motion?
I can't even remember what this is.
Medical.
Medical, the nurse.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'll move to approve.
Move to approve, is there a second?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion?
For everybody?
Yeah.
Medical expenses at the jail, how much more do you need?
I don't know.
Four, or do you have questions?
All the great cost savings that you've done.
Yeah.
We entered this contract with a outside vendor to provide medical care at the jail.
Louder, please.
In December of eleven, you guys entered into a contract, well, the commissioners entered into a contract with advanced correctional health care to provide health care at the jail. And we have not asked for any additional, any additionals as far as that contract goes. So, since December of eleven, we've been operating with the same medical staff, yet we've experienced a twenty-five percent growth in our inmate population at the jail. And then since we've turned the juvenile center into an annex, that's increased our footprint there on that complex. So, we need additional medical staff to be able to provide services to a twenty-five percent larger inmate population and a bigger footprint.
Okay. Is there any questions for, it's been moved to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? See none? Move on. Hamilton County Public Building, wait a minute, this is still part of this, thirty thousand dollars, need to reinstate thirty from reduction made last month, as I did not account, Kristen Grinstad.
Yeah, this is just a bookkeeping error.
Okay.
And some funds for the airport.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we got repairs and maintenance, two thousand six hundred dollars. So moved.
Twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred, that's what I said, two thousand six hundred dollars. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, we have additionals for engineering services for Allisonville and one hundred and forty-sixth Street. The two million three hundred thousand that we discussed earlier in the work session, is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, like we talked about in the session, I want to vote in favor of the, this engineering money, the two million three hundred thousand dollars for engineering, but I do want to see the list of projects that we're committed to out of major bridge, before we do any more movement, out of major bridge, the ones that we've already committed to. Give me a list of what they are, and what we're committed to, so I have a running idea of what we're spending out of major bridge.
Fred, we all want it, let's-
Yeah, every-
Okay, um, let's do a roll call on this then. Paul?
What?
The two million three hundred?
Yeah, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I'm gonna abstain from this, here's why. I feel like if you're voting for that two million three hundred, you're voting for the full thirty-six, and I'm not, I'm not there yet, but Rick?
I'm gonna vote against.
Amy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And motion carries. You got the numbers, madam auditor? Moving on. We have two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for a bridge rehab and widening. Two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, it says.
We talked about this today.
Yeah, we did.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, go ahead.
Thank you. This is for Logan Street, it's gonna widen and do rehab of it over White River. When we talked this morning, Highway indicated that Noblesville would participate fifty-fifty, which was greatly appreciated. And this is just for the design, engineering. The cost is supposed to be about three million, so one and a half million from us in Noblesville.
Okay, it's been moved to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And this next one is another one sponsored by Councilman McKinney, it's one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one hundred and ninety-first and Grassy Brunch Roundabout, is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. We got land purchase and demolition of single-family residents located at ninety-two twenty-four East two hundred and sixth Street, Noblesville, Indiana, sponsored by Councilman Schwartz, is there a motion? Eighty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right.
Question, and it's not a slow thing. This is all one lump sum, but we have to vote for it individually? Is that correct?
Yeah, we could, but there's, they're larger numbers, we could-
Okay, whatever you want to do. Fine, I'm just asking for my own-
It gives you a chance just to ask questions.
Yeah, especially when they're larger amounts.
Thank you.
All right, we have one hundred and fifty thousand to place a covering over the sand aggregate storage bin, sponsored by Councilman McKinney, is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we got two hundred thousand dollars to replacement of a seventeen-year-old snow dump truck, for two hundred thousand dollars, I'm gonna make a motion for that, is there a second?
Seconded.
Feel like that's important, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then this one's five thousand five hundred dollars, transfer funds to cover future shortages for professional service lines.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we have Robin Mills, one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. My God, there's a lot of these. All right.
This is a reduction, right?
Yeah, these are reductions.
So moved.
Yeah, they're good. All those, all those in favor?
What letter are we on?
F two.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I don't think we're there yet.
Oh, that's-
Run F two.
We are? Yes, we are, okay. Now, council recommendation finance committee, county portion of Highway thirty-seven funding, eight million dollars, remaining four million to be appropriated in Fund Forty-Nine and Seven, is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Seconded.
Okay, discussion? Anybody want to explain, talk, it's eight million dollars?
This is the special distribution money that we're setting aside for State Route thirty-seven. We have a twelve million dollar commitment.
Okay.
The other four million will be coming up.
Madam Auditor, on our, on twelve two, or I'm sorry, F two, did we take a vote? No, we had a motion second, did we get the vote?
Okay, well, that's good then.
Bust of them.
All right, so eight million dollars, let's do, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All those opposed? See none? Now we're got inspection fees for rigid flat fork, twenty-one thousand dollars, is there a motion?
So moved.